If you have any questions or anything here, we'd be glad to answer those for the budget. How everybody get quiet? Okay, we'll wait for a little bit, give anybody a chance to come in.
Hello, Chantel Lemmons, 140 Green Street, Paklet, South Carolina, 29372. My question was, it's kind of from what we were talking about a little bit in the planning commission meeting, as far as millage rates and having to increase that. So it was kind of portrayed that maybe the budget wasn't going to be sustainable. And I, my question would be, is it possible we can actually look at that stuff and get numbers like that as citizens? I'd like to see what that millage is, that it would have to increase and things like that, and whether or not our budget is sustainable.
Increase for what?
So, from what I'm understanding, when I've watched the fiscal stuff.
She said millage, Mayor.
Yes, the millage. So it was portrayed that our budget wasn't going to be sustainable, the way that it is, and that there's a potential for having to increase our millage, and that there's been banked millage. And I am wondering how we could get the information, or if maybe that can be made available to the citizens, to better understand what that increase could be if we do not get the growth to make up for that to get to a sustainable level. Does that make sense?
Patrick, you want to address any of that?
Our current millage is .0842, and it would all depend when we get to that point. There's other things that, you wouldn't be able to tell until you put together that particular year's budget where the shortfall was, in terms of what the town would have to potentially increase the millage rate to be able to compensate for.
So we're not in a shortage?
What's that?
We're not in a shortage, correct? Like our fiscal year showed, we're not having to compensate for that this year, correct?
Correct. We have not increased the millage rate in, is it 10 years, five years?
Five, yeah.
But it's .0842 right now, and what I presented today is a balanced budget with no increase.
With no increase?
Correct.
So I guess my question is, why is that not a sustainable budget at this moment then, that we would require? What is the projection that we're not going to be sustainable then? Because that's the impression I got at Monday's meeting, that somehow if we didn't have growth increase in this area, we were not going to be sustainable. And to me, that sounds like, right now, we're pretty sustainable.
So what we look at is cost increases, everything from gas to purchases, raw goods, cost of transportation. We look at, the town tries to be as best it can competitive with other municipalities that are out there, especially for our police department. Our police department is currently at about a $10,000 shortfall per person against Spartanburg County. We can't compete with Spartanburg County.
How does that compare to, like, Cowpens and Landrum and other municipalities instead of a county?
As of right now, Cowpens is slightly higher than us, in terms of what they're currently paying as a starting salary for a Class 1 certified. And I know that you say it's different because it's county versus city.
Correct.
But for the perspective of the officer, it's just 30 minutes down the road. It's 20 minutes down the road. It's another place to go work. And as of right now, Spartanburg County Deputy's Office, I believe, I was talking to the chief earlier, they're offering a $5,000 sign-on bonus on top of that. So certified officers going to the same academy that we're going to, end up making somewhere in the neighborhood of around $55,000 a year, plus the sign-on bonus. So that's something that we compete against. Market rate for our, a lot of our staff and our employees, we're currently below market rate for most of our staff. So those are the things we consider. But they're, just with any other, like, company or business, costs increase every year. Interest rates increase.
So with this year's budget, though, were we able to give raises for that staff? Were we able to give the officers raises? Were we able to give staff governors raises and still not increase the millage based off the budget this year?
The way we were able to do that is, right now, we've cut into the royalties that we're going to be getting from Riverbend, in terms of the quarry. I was really hoping that the town would use the majority of the money from the quarry for infrastructure projects, to use on grants, and 20% of various loans and stuff to be able to take care of sidewalks, take care of stormwater issues, roadways. We've got lots of updates that need to be done, both to public works, there's a possibility that we're going to have to add on new officers. So, I mean sidewalks, I mean, to do all the sidewalks in the town, we're looking at at least 3 million. The Town of Paklet currently has about 44 miles of roadway. So I think we're in the neighborhood of around 20, 30 million dollars to do all of the roads in the entire town. We're getting close to, our PD is having a lot of issues with it right now, and we may need to consider rebuilding or completely renovating. We've got a chipper and a truck that's, often goes down both. The total cost for that is about $140,000. So, yeah, there's a lot of things that I would like to, for the town to consider for infrastructure, with those funds that are coming in from Riverbend, so the town's not using those funds just to take care of the day-to-day operations of the town.
Do you have something available to the public that shows these kind of projections of year on year, what we project that we're going to have to spend like that, and how the town is making money currently, so we can see something in form of like a data chart?
We don't have anything like that. Typically, you have that when you have a full-scale finance department. One of the problems that you end up having with a town of this size is, you know, not only am I the town administrator and the zoning administrator, but I'm also the HR director, the public works director, the economic development director. I have to do several jobs on this. So, and already, I mean, a couple nights ago, I was here till 10 o'clock at night. So, I mean, I mean, yes, it could all be done, and I may end up having to put a bed in here. And at that point, if I end up living here, then I could, probably.
Basically, the question that you asked initially, we can try our best to predict 25, 26 budget, and we're able to, what we can see, achieve that without raising the millage rate. 26, 27, 28, 29, we can't predict that. We can't predict what inflation's going to do, we can't predict what cost of labor is going to be, or anything on that. So we're going to have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Do you happen to know what we have banked back in millage? Like, how much the increase could be?
No clue.
Okay. Do you, Patrick?
I'll have to get back to you on that, in terms of how much we've banked.
Okay. Thank you.
We can prepare a budget at any point in time that allows us to not raise the millage, although it might impair some advancements that we anticipated or hoped for. But we can prepare a budget that does not increase millage. It's not, I mean, all it comes down to is just balancing everything. So it's not an impossibility. Raising taxes is up to how much we want to advance, or improve, or do more than we normally have done, that kind of deal. So, can we balance a budget where there's no millage rate increase? Absolutely.
And to do that, in many cases, the council will have to determine what services end up being cut.
And just so I know I'm correct, like, if a millage rate came up, even with the banked, would it have to be voted on by the whole town? Is that one of those ones that go to ballot? Okay. So we couldn't, as the town, maybe look at some of this and give you feedback to say, hey, maybe I would be willing to let my millage rate go up and have that pass, if it meant that these things would be up kept a little bit better, versus we have to have a huge expansion of growth to do that in one big burst? Like, is that a possibility for us to look at stuff like that, too?
Yeah, I'll tell you, it's kind of funny that you mention this. I had a meeting, probably a couple weeks ago, with our field representative from the municipal association, and she was talking about banked millage. And one thing that she considered or thought that we could put together was, every time the council considers millage increases, that, you know, I could present something that says, you know, if you end up increasing it X number of dollars, this means that you could add on three new police officers. If you increase it X number of dollars, this means that you could do those three or four parks that you wanted to do. Or if you increase it, you'd be able to do X, Y, and Z. So at that point, council, who normally does not increase millage rate, may see from the public's perspective that, yes, we do want to see X, Y, and Z, and the community or their constituents come to them and say, we're willing to pay, you know, $20, $30, whatever more, a year or something, to be able to cover the cost of doing X, Y, and Z project that is in long-term plans, is what the community wants, that sort of thing.
Okay. That's just my questions, comments, you know, other solutions?
Just a suggestion, you was wanting projections. Maybe you can look at maybe past budgets, and look at what we've spent, and get some idea of where we are now.
The difference between?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's a suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
The best way to control your millage rate is when you vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to comment that I'd have to have a petition from the vast, vast majority of my district to ever raise taxes. I'm never voting to raise taxes, unless they all beat down my door and ask me to, and I don't see it happening.
Okay. Even if perhaps we had a discussion of the this or that? Because some people may be willing to say this.
I'd have the discussion about cutting this or that, but I'll never vote to raise millage, ever.
Okay. Right.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else on the budget? Okay, we'll call that, and now we'll call the town meeting to order. In compliance with the Federal Information Act, notice this meeting was submitted by fax to the Spartanburg Herald-Journal, posted on the bulletin board lobby of Town Hall and on the town's website. We'll now have the invocation. Rick, would you have that?
Dear everyone, Father, we want to thank you for this day. I want to thank you for this town that you've allowed us to live in. I want to thank you for the people here that's representing our communities, the people on the town council up here, please watch over and give us the wisdom to make the decisions that would be best suited for this town and pleasing in your eyes. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong. Next up. Do you have a presentation?
We have no presentations.
No presentations. Okay. Citizen comments, first up is Darlene Henderson. And I'd like to remind everybody, it'll be a three-minute time limit on these, and then we'll, you know, we'll carry on with all these other ones.
Good evening. Darlene Henderson, I'm a lifelong resident of Paklet. Each of you, April, Teresa, Thomas, Dar, Rick, Jason, and Ned, I don't want to miss anybody, you were elected. To me, that means you were chosen to be the voice of your district. Your neighbors picked you out of anybody else, they picked you. Please ask yourself, what would my neighbors want? If you think your neighbors want poorly constructed, overly priced homes on less than a fifth of an acre, then vote for that. Consumer report states that the builders, that Mark III uses has a list of complaints ranging from poor workmanship, water intrusion, structural issues, and warranty claims. I have to believe that your friends and neighbors would rather a business come into our town, a business that would take some of the financial burden off of the residents. I don't want to give up so easily on our town being able to gain an industry. I'm not giving up on our town, and I hope that you won either. Let's respect the decision that the planning committee, and vote to keep the property zoned as light industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, DeeDee Quinn. State your name and the address, and we'll go ahead.
Beverly, most of you know me as DeeDee Quinn, 421 Briarwood Drive, Paklet. Good evening, and thank you all for allowing me to address you this evening. I am respectfully asking that you uphold the planning and development committee's decision to vote against the rezoning of the property in question under item 11 of our agenda tonight. The proposed high-density development resulting from this rezoning is of serious concern. First, the financial burden on the Town of Paklet. After the construction is complete, the Town of Paklet will be responsible for trash pickup, sanitation, additional fire protection, the police, and even addition of Town Hall clerical help, the bookkeeping, the tax notices, and all of the support for these 700 new residents. Second, the neighborhood is not actually a part of Paklet. It's actually, it's isolated from Paklet. Being accessible only from the four-lane highway, it doesn't come through Paklet, the town itself. The residents are unlikely to support our local businesses. While the plan also includes commercial and retail space, those businesses, like a grocery store, or a coffee shop, or whatever, will likely compete with our existing businesses. They'll not support them. Third, there's concern about the town's financial strategy, as has already been discussed in this year's financial budget. The town administrator did state on Monday night, I think that's where a lot of these questions did come from, because the statement was made, that it was necessary for this development to increase the town's assessed value in order to secure the general obligation bond to develop these river projects that we had already discussed and talked about. But we know that the geo-bonds are simply loans to be repaid, and loans to be repaid are often done by raising taxes. And those are our concerns. I'm not sure where this idea came from, that this sudden development to increase this assessed value would float everything, but this is a very risky strategy. What happens when the development doesn't develop? What happens when it sits there in phase one for the next five years? What happens to the loan obligation that we have taken out? Responsible growth means ensuring we can support what we build, not using development to borrow for more things than we can afford. That's called living beyond our means. The lack of transparency has been very disappointing. My property abuts this property. I have not been notified of any of this, and I understand that it was posted in the newspaper, posted on the highway, that there was no legal obligation to inform me of this. But that's one of the things that I have valued about Paklet, is that we do what's right, and that means going beyond what's minimally required of the law sometimes. And finally, I'm not against development, but I'm against the wrong type of development. We welcome thoughtful, balanced growth, but this plan is too dense, too isolated, and too costly. A zoning redesignation like an R-20 would be a far better deal, or leaving it as light industry, so that we can bring in higher tax base, is a far better deal for us, and an R-20 would better fit the infrastructure and the character of our community of Paklet. And please do the right thing, and think about the future of our town. Uphold the committee's decision, and deny this rezoning request for this high-dense proposed neighborhood. Thank you.
Like you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cole Quinn.
Good evening, Council. I am Cole Quinn, 421 Briarwood Drive, son of DeeDee. I want to start out by saying, you know, I would think I would be your target audience. I'm 25, I'm looking at starting a family in the next few years or so, but this development is not at all what I'm looking for. I've lived in Paklet my entire life, and I've never seen something like this, and this isn't what I want to see for my town. I don't want to hear what's going on in my neighbors' living rooms. I don't want to see what's going on in their bedrooms, and I certainly don't want to look out one of my windows and see into someone else's bathroom. But when you cram this many homes into this little bit of land, that's exactly what happens. The design doesn't reflect Paklet at all. It reflects greed, it reflects profit, and it frankly reflects poor planning. Now, let me be clear, though. The town needs to grow. The town needs to clean up. We need better infrastructure for the growth we want. We need more resources for the income for the town. But, you know, none of us are opposed to this. But when you add nearly one-third of Paklet's population into 50 acres that's isolated from Paklet, that doesn't do anything for our town. And let me ask you, the people that live in these high-density HOA-controlled neighborhoods, do they really care about supporting our town? Or are they more likely to go right out 176 and take their business just 10 minutes up the road? I don't want to join an HOA. I don't want to live near six feet, you know, six feet close to my neighbors, and I would like to stay away from that life. That's why people typically move to Paklet. We don't have an existing HOA, and we don't want one. All I ask of you tonight is to please vote to keep Paklet unordinary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I had a lot of numbers. I'm Heath Henderson, I live at 353 Briarwood Drive in Paklet. I've been here 30-plus years, married to Darlene, she's a lifelong resident. My parents lived, went to high school here, my dad grew up here. But I had a lot of numbers I'd looked at today, trying to compare everything to other towns in our area, Cowpens, Inman. Patrick's mentioned Inman a couple of times. It's hard to sit down and do the math, because there are so many different variables. There's differences in the amount of millage they take in, the millage we take in. So it's kind of hard to sit there and just say, yeah, we can compare ourselves to them and everything, because one thing about them, their sizes are not as big in landmass as ours. But we're equal to Cowpens in so many ways, that, but they still, they have less people, less houses, and a smaller area, a lot smaller. But they still have the same budget we have. I think they draw a little bit more in the millage, but the biggest problem is, is they have a lot more industry than we have, because there's no industry down here. And if you look at this property, it was previously zoned as either agricultural or residential. I couldn't find out which one it was prior to. But our planning commission and you guys worked on it to change it, to make it light industrial from what it was originally. And now we're looking at trying to change it back, only because we lost a deal for an industrial park or something to go in there. And at this point, and that was made mention of Monday night, and from Chantel, because she said they just worked on all this to change this zoning. So if the zoning was something previous, and now it's been changed to light industrial, and now we want to go back to residential, why the sudden changes? Why all the changes to make that happen? We got a planning committee, they made their statement the other night. I asked that y'all follow their decision, the vote they made to not do this, but it's what it is. Ricky, Teresa, Ned, April, I know y'all are from here, I know Star's from here, been here almost your whole life, if not your entire life. I don't know where you came from, Jason. Tom, I know you're from Rhode Island, Connecticut area. I don't know what it looked like where y'all came from. But we don't want our area to look like Bulling Springs, we don't want it to look like Inman, we don't want it to look like Duncan, we don't want to be those people. Our county council has pushed a lot to go help those people grow. We should be looking to county council to help us grow, and on the industry side. Everything about those areas out there are growing and getting bigger, and they're being able to sustain stuff. And there are tons of people moving in, but we don't want to have all those people. We would rather have the industry, not the people. And I was told the other night, that the only way you'll get to industry is if you have the rooftops. But we know that's not true, because if you keep on going a half-mile down the road to Union County line, once you cross the Union County line, you can see the industry is coming to Union, but not the residential houses. Now, there is one neighborhood going in down below the Tractor Supply, but that's the only one that has it right now. There may be plans to build more, but they're getting the industry without the rooftops. We should be able to do the same thing. But the biggest problem is, they get a better tax break through their county than they do in Spartanburg County, or they don't want to be in the town limits of Paklet with the industry, one of the two. All I ask is that we keep it similar to the neighborhoods we have now, especially the ones that are around that area. Don't change something just because we think it'll make us grow or get bigger. There's not enough value in these types of homes and the types of things we're getting for the amount of impact it's going to take and put us where we are. I think we should work more on trying to entice more industry to come in and do homework to try to figure that out. Let's work with county council to see if they can help us out and get more industry down here, or get some industry back in here. We thrived a lot because of the mill, but now the mill's gone. I guess that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Kirby Reinhardt.
My name is Kirby Reinhardt. I live at 140 Morning Sur Lane. I have been here for about 10 years, and have absolutely fallen in love with this town, and actually married into a family that has been here for three generations. I am not against growth in any way, but I am against a high-density neighborhood that in no way preserves the integrity of our town imposing on a low-density neighborhood of residents that have put their heart and soul into this town, many for more than 30-plus years. We have limited police and fire coverage, and depend on a primarily volunteer fire department. And I have to ask how the additional stress will affect these apartments, and how it will affect our current residents with the increase of people in the town, in the area. Furthermore, although the schools can fit the students, how will this affect the class size? Studies show time and time again that a larger student-to-teacher ratio is detrimental to students both short-term and long-term, and it also will stop teachers from coming to our area, and we need those teachers in our community. These kids are the future of the town that we love. Growing pains are inevitable, but we don't have to stretch our infrastructure to the point that our quality of life is threatened. When it comes to cost benefit, this neighborhood, as it is currently planned, will cost more than it will benefit, and as the planning commission mentioned on Monday, it does not fit in with the vision that we have created for our home and the town that we love. What I would like to do is read a few excerpts from the comprehensive plan for the town, and just ask everybody on the panel if you guys believe that this community that is being proposed actually fits in with the plan for this town. First is to maintain Paklet's unique character and small-town atmosphere, and encourage a strong physical sense of neighborhood and community. Second is to adopt policy and regulations that include conservation, protection, management, and enhancement of the critical and sensitive features of the natural environment in Paklet and the surrounding area, while encouraging responsible economic development and diversity. Third is to adopt policy that manages not only the timing and location of development, but also the content and design of development, to maintain and enhance the community and character of Paklet while promoting economic development. character of Paklet while promoting economic development. Again, I am in no way against growth, I'm just against the level of growth that this will bring and the way it will change the integrity of our town. A smaller neighborhood, barriers in protecting those that have been the backbone of this town for many years would be a significant compromise to the growth that was suggested. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need approval of minutes, May 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes, May 1st, 2025.
I second. Motion made to second to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2025, all in favor? All opposed. Okay. Department reports, you have those, any questions on those?
Patrick, I have something on yours, the properties that are being condemned, how are we progressing with those, you know?
The condemned properties on there?
Those three properties, I think it's three.
Number seven.
Number seven.
So, working with CC now, we've got one, two, three, four, five properties that currently, six properties that have been condemned, and working with the property owners to try to see if we can get those properties fixed up or taken care of. We have some, so typically what ends up happening with a condemned property is, we give the property owner some time to try to fix up the property and bring it up to code. If that's not going to happen, the town of Paklet has the ability to go on the property and demo the property, then lien the property. At least, we would love to try to work with the property owner as much as possible, or if there's a possibility that a developer in the area may be interested in, you know, taking care of or developing the property. And so we're looking at different avenues, so the way it works right now is, properties cannot be sold that are currently under condemnation orders or code enforcement violations unless the town administrator signs off on it. And what I'd like to see is, we try to work with property owners who are, or somebody who's going to buy it and to fix it up, and who's got a real plan of how to fix things. So, what I'm looking at right now is a possibility of seeing if there's some type of incentive to encourage people to buy these properties and fix them up, and looking at the possibility of waiving building permits for developers who come in and have a plan to move forward and develop this. But I'm currently having the attorney look at it in Municipal Association of South Carolina, look at it, and see what the viability is of that, and if there's anything that I'm not thinking of for that incentive.
When you say this is zoning administrator's decision, is that something you'll bring to council before you make a decision?
I mean, I can, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says that's a requirement on there, but typically, if someone is interested in buying a house, like for instance, I'm not sure if you remember the house, I think it's like the second or third house up on Stone Street that's up there.
Exactly, yeah, where it was split, and then, you know, smaller houses were put on one single lot.
No, 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 I'm talking about the house that was overgrowth in the front yard, the roof was caved in, and there was somebody who was interested in buying the property, and they agreed to take over the code enforcement of the previous owner on there, and so they put together a plan, and they said, we're going to do X, Y, and Z to do this, to fix all the code enforcement, and I'm going to sign a document saying that as the new owner, I'm fully responsible for that. And so that's what we want to make sure of.
The one on the corner by the church, correct?
No, hold on.
Because the one on the corner by the church sat there for another year because he had so much difficulty with the code enforcement?
Yes.
Same one? Okay. So what I'm asking is, is when you're presented with these decisions, are you going to bring it to council, being that you work for the council?
I mean, I'll update you and let you know that those particular projects happen when they come up.
Yeah. I think before a decision is made, maybe presented to the council, or at least posed the question, the most council members, does it have to be at a formal meeting or something, maybe just ask, you know, maybe our suggestions individually? You know what I'm saying? I think it still, I think it still should be on the council's decision, if we're going to alter a property or something like that, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, I get what you're saying, but I mean, I'm just telling you what's in the ordinance of the town of Paklet, and I wouldn't want to violate the town.
Right, yeah, I mean, I totally understand, the ordinances are there for guidelines. What I'm asking is, is that if you have a decision, you have to make, being that you work for the council, maybe bring it to the council, make it our decision, since we are for the citizens.
I'm not for the citizens.
I mean, the other night at the planning commission meeting, you were arguing with citizens and arguing with planning commission members, I'm not sure if you are or not, but you work for the council, so I would expect that you would bring things to the council.
That's your opinion.
I agree, and a lot of citizens agree with the same way.
Okay. On number eight, too, on the chief creates legislation to provide additional deterrence to nuisance properties, has he come up with anything on that? You know, we're talking about nuisance of properties, where they've been called over and over to crimes or whatever, you know, anything that's happening in those.
Sure, this came up, when I used to live up in Maryland, there was a situation where you had a property owner who was renting out, or kind of like a slumlord, who was renting out a property, didn't live in the state, and was just renting out a property and didn't really care who was in there. And what would end up happening is that the police were called on a regular basis to address issues of noise and disruption and various things going on, and, you know, the people who were there didn't care about getting a ticket. The property owner, as long as he was getting his money, he was fine. And so they instituted a program where, after a certain number of calls made for nuisance or issues, that the town had the ability to find the property owner and have an additional fee on the property owner to try to enforce their lease agreement, and either evict the person that was in there, or look at other options to try to fix it. So we're looking at that right now, that's also being reviewed by the attorney and from Municipal Association of South Carolina.
Okay. Any questions on anything else?
Number eleven, any update as far as the grant for the...
The grant that was submitted to Norfolk Southern, last time that we received the fifteen thousand dollars for the design project, that was approved in July, so I'm hoping sometime in July we get a contact from them to let us know if we were awarded the amount that we requested.
Patrick, I have a question about number eighteen. Mr. Lyles, is any of that going to affect his start date on working, starting on the cloth room?
No, it's a completely separate project on there. The only thing that actually, let me tell you this, the only thing that actually might happen is, the sooner the development on the river happens, it would speed up his project a lot more, because if there's interest in developing that and seeing a lot more activity out there, it would spur on a lot more interest with the cloth room on there.
You think you'll have any preliminary costs and things on that riverfront project?
We had a meeting last week and talked through some of this stuff, and while we were going through it, Mr. Lyles indicated that he was missing some of the numbers and realizes that the total cost was not in there, and so he wanted some opportunity to fix that. And then we're going to reach out to, we've got a meeting scheduled to meet with John Woodsby, Parks and Recreation Director for Spartanburg County, to see if there are any possibilities that Spartanburg County could get involved with the project.
Okay.
I still have a couple more questions.
Okay.
Number twelve, regarding the patriarch banners around the circle, are we going to have any that are going to be placed downtown, or just...
We were just trying this out for now, we can look at putting on some of the utility poles out on nine, it doesn't always look as attractive on lines with wires and stuff all over them, but that can definitely be looked at if council wants to move in that direction.
I would think we would want them downtown just as good on our circle.
Excuse, I can hear.
I would think we would want to see them downtown as much as we would on our circle. And then also, on number thirteen, regarding the new safe that's been installed inside of the vault, I've asked this question for years or more now, have our cameras been installed inside this building?
Yes.
Okay. And where are they placed?
There is, there is a camera right here, there's cameras around the buildings, and there's a camera just inside this little walkway in through here that covers the safe and the front glass right here.
Where are those cameras installed?
These cameras out here were installed probably a year ago, and then this here was just recently installed.
But these were not working, from what I understood, these cameras have not worked for a while.
This one is, had not been hooked up fully, because we're waiting until everything got taken care of up there, but this one has, I'm sorry, that one, I'm sorry, that one right there works, and has been working for all this time. This one right on the other side just recently got put online.
Are they all working, because I've been assured each and every time that I ask this question, that it's only going to be a matter of weeks, or whoever can get back in here.
Four or five years now, six, six years?
Yeah.
Something of that sort?
Yeah, I've only been here for three years, so I don't know about the other times, but...
Well, three years, yeah.
Yes, everything's up and running.
They're all working right now, right?
They're all working, and one of the things that came up was possibly increasing the hard drive space on there, so they can be, keep recordings for much longer. Recordings are based on if it's in 4K or 1080, of how much space it takes up on the hard drive. I believe we have an eight terabyte system right now, and I've got a, looking at expanding that to a much larger terabyte hard drive system, so that we can end up having recordings for much longer.
So how many hours or days is, can you go back on now?
I would rather tell you privately and not publicly, so that a criminal could potentially know how many hours that we currently have.
Thank you.
That is just my preference, but if council would like for me to tell you, I can go ahead and tell you.
I think we need to be private.
I think an email.
Yeah.
A private conversation is actually probably the best.
I mean, right after the meeting, I can, I can let you know, these meetings are recorded, and I would rather not a criminal know.
Transparency, you can ask.
Mm-hmm.
I have one question.
Sure.
It's not a number, it's at the very end, your meetings.
Yes.
Can you tell me the, basically the body of the meeting for millage? Can you tell me what that consisted of?
Yeah, so that was one meeting that I had with Naomi Reed with the Municipal Association, and she was explaining to me the idea of banking millage, where if the town does not increase the millage every year, it has the ability to carry it forward over a certain number of years back. Where in the state, I believe it's a maximum of fifteen percent increase per year, however, if you haven't increased it in several years, you bank that ability to go higher in one year.
Is this, is this something that's like, I guess my concern is, is it sounds like there's a lot of chatter about millage increases? Is this something that, I mean, there's, how many meetings have you had? I mean, so far I see a meeting for millage.
It's one.
Is this something that's, I mean, I've heard, I've heard several times in three years about millage increases, that's my concern. I think, I think we can plan to do things, and we can plan to preserve our community. My concern is, is do we plan good enough, or do we anticipate at some point raising millage? So, meeting for millage with the Municipal Association, Naomi, I would like to know more about that, if you don't mind. I mean, maybe I can call Naomi and just ask her if she has, like, a presentation she can give.
Yeah, I can provide you the PowerPoint presentation.
Was there more people, or is it just you and Naomi, or...
It was just her and I, we were talking about potential grants and various ways to cover costs on various projects, and I was going through with her the proposed budget, and she said, I noticed in your budget that you didn't have a millage bank section on there, and I was like, I didn't know anything about that, and so she said, let me tell you about it. And so she came up here and went through millage bank and explained that to me, because I didn't know anything about that, so...
Do you feel like the Municipal Association advocates to raising millage, right?
No.
Or just kind of, I think maybe they're just advocating to help you understand how to use your millage as it's brought in?
What I see the Municipal Association being is experienced people who have been in various levels of city government.
Sure.
Who are providing me with information to better do my job.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the Municipal Association's for.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Patrick, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
I see you met with the USDA Rural Development Grants, Simone, you say you had a phone meeting. I had two of the residents in my district contact me, and so I've been researching monies, possible monies, that may be available to assist them to help remodel some of their homes. By any chance, whoever you spoke with, did they mention any money that may be available for residents in the town that can apply, or did they give you, like, any guidelines? I contacted them and I've been waiting, it's been a week and no one's called me back, so was anything like that discussed?
So the person that, and I can't remember her name, but I'll have to look back and send it to you, but she's the representative for the state of South Carolina as it relates to the rural development grants and loans, and since the town is less than, I believe, twenty thousand people, we qualify for that, there's a grant that we can apply for, and it's based off of the median household incomes and various types of census data stuff, in terms of what percentage of a project we can get covered by USDA. There are funds on the state level for this, but the federal government is, the federal government provides these to the state agencies, and as different departments end up getting cut, like we've seen recently, they're seeing a decline in the amount of money that's there. And so they said, you can put in for these grants, and I'm looking at possibly putting in for something on there, and it may be for some building or infrastructure. The, the, what ends up happening is, is they don't have enough money every year to fund all the projects, but what's nice is you put in a project, and you leave it there, and you don't have to reapply every year, and when funding does come available, they send it to you. The other thing I was looking at was USDA low-interest loan programs, to be able to do various projects as a way, and I had looked at it as, you know, we were looking at the riverfront project, and I'm just trying to look at creative ideas on how to be able to fund this project, and seeing, since we're limited on our GO bond amount, could the USDA be able to fund a piece on there on top of that? And the answer to that's no, because the USDA is based on the same system of the eight percent maximum on the assessed value amounts on there, so when we put in for a loan under USDA, it gets logged against our, our eight percent of our assessed value on there, and so it's just one, it's a lower amount we end up getting from the, from a GO bond. So, long story, no, we did not end up talking about those particular things, but if you can let me know of kind of what you're talking about, I'll reach back out to her and see what type of programs there are for individuals.
For the citizens, yes, that's what I'm saying.
There was some funding that was recently announced, that we put up on our Facebook page, about Hurricane Helene assistance that's recently come out.
Okay, I got you, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, didn't have anything on boards and commissions, committees?
Nothing on boards and commissions, committees.
The unfinished business, considered second reading and adoption of the FY 2026 annual budget for the town of Paklet. budget for the Town of Paklet.
Motion to approve second reading of the fiscal year 2026 annual budget.
Have a motion to, you know, to accept the 2026 budget. Anything, anybody have any questions? Neither second.
I'll second.
Second. Are any questions?
Like I put on there in the last council meeting, a proposed section on there for capital improvement projects. You're welcome to approve this as part of that, but like you did at the last meeting, you may just want to do it separately.
Do we need a separate agenda item for that?
We can do that as a separate thing after possibly, if y'all wanted to do a workshop or something like that, but the capital improvement plan is, you know, based on stuff that has been brought up in the master plan and comp plan and what council members have made reference to. It was just a placeholder to put it all down and kind of get an idea of where the monies would potentially come from, when it would be a good idea to try to start working on them. And then what I do is I take that information with, when I meet with ACOG to discuss different types of grant opportunities that come up and how to be able to apply those.
Would you prefer to put together a workshop to go through it all with council or do you?
I would prefer.
That's up to you guys. It's, it's, it's a lot more of a living, breathing document than your, your budget is. To me, it's just a, a kind of a general direction of where to go. It is not anything that is kind of more or less in stone, but it, it kind of gives me a general direction. So if there's anything that y'all see that's, that's on there or not on there or should be on there or shouldn't be on there, let me know and I can kind of get an idea of pricing and where we can go for funding on projects.
This isn't currently attached to the budget, right?
Sir?
This is not attached to the budget?
It's part of the agenda packet and full disclosure, the reason it's in there is, you know, I'm currently in a, taking a master's class for an MBA.
Right.
And I have a financial management class and I had to create that for one of my projects.
Okay, but it's not part of 10A, correct?
Sir?
It's not part of 10A?
That's up to you if y'all want to have a part of it. You can, you can approve it separately. Or only approve the budget.
I appreciate the work. I think we have a second on the budget alone already.
Yeah, we have a second.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else? Anybody else have questions?
The capital improvement panel looks good.
Thank you. Also in there is some sections that show forecasting to kind of give an idea of where taxes and business license and...
Let's vote first.
Sir?
Let's vote.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Do you want to explain the capital?
Sir?
You want to explain the rest now?
Yeah, just there's, in the packet itself, there is some sections on there where it shows some forecasting over the next year or two in terms of where we, where there's a possibility or based on, I went back and looked at all of your revenue for the last several years. And so the population trend for Paklet, based off of where things have been going over the last several years, historical fund balance, so the Town of Paklet has approximately about a million dollars in fund balance. Now, keep in mind, you've got two loans that you may have to pay back for the classroom. So until those potentially get forgiven, I'd consider those a liability against there. You've also got the business license revenue history and forecast over the next year, currently where your revenue sources and expenditures. I had, what ended up, I was looking at this and I also looked at what your previous administrator had put together for a packet and just wanted to put something together to kind of showcase or show a little bit more about the budget than just what you typically see.
It was put together nicely.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Moving on, consider on the second reading of ordinance to annex into the Town of Paklet, South Carolina property located on 600 Zion Church Road with map, tax map number 3-30-00-014.03.
Motion to approve on second reading ordinance to annex into Paklet 600 Zion Church Road.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on that? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Moving on to new business, consider the first reading, RZ 2025-01, request to rezone 3-33-00-002.00 and 3-33-00-012.01 from L1 to lighting, not to, but from Light Industrial to FRD Flexible Review District and C4 General Commercial District.
Motion to approve RZ 2025-01, request to rezone 3-33-00-002.00 and 3-33-00-012.01 from Light Industrial to FRD and C4 General Commercial.
We have, we have a motion and we have a second.
A second.
Motion made in second. We have any discussion?
Um, I do.
We have, do we have any presentation first? I'm sorry, I meant.
Sure. It's my responsibility to make sure to let you know that this was presented to the Planning Commission meeting this past Monday, right before a public hearing that was held. And after it was held, the Planning Commission voted, I believe it was five against, one abstained on that project and then one was absent at that meeting.
So unanimous?
Yes. And during that presentation, the developer, Mark III, gave a presentation and if you'd like have them here tonight to give you the same presentation and for you to be able to ask any questions that you may have directly to them.
So first I'd like to thank the Planning Commission. They did a good job. They cross-examined well. They found some weaknesses in the design. Again, this is just a rezoning vote right now. There are some tweaks in the design that can and should be made and the Planning Commission kind of dug down, actually showed a pretty strong, they, they were very assertive and did a good job to kind of push for a little better design. I don't know if they'll get all of those items, but it seems that the developer is committed to tweaking some things and that's good. They did a good job. We had a lot of interest. Obviously, a lot of people here interested and that's good. It's good that people are getting involved and care. There's a lot of points I could make on this, on, on why I believe this, this is a good idea. There's, there's no perfect development project. There never has been, there never will be something that has, something that everyone wants. This is really darn close though. It's outside of what is historically Paklet, which was mentioned tonight. It doesn't interfere with the small town feel in any way. One rode in, one rode out. It gives us the tax base to essentially raise our debt ceiling and give us the possibility of, you know, funding some of these projects we've been talking about that we cannot fund on our own. I mean, Paklet was built on big hairy development. Milliken being the first developer. This, this development is literally compared to what they did.
Milliken was second.
Heavy industrial right on the river, super dense housing, clear cutting, old growth trees. The Mill Hill was 80% duplexes on 8,000 square foot lots. Paklet is used to this. This is, this is just a new chapter in the long history of Paklet. It's a little different. It's scary. It's new. It's change. You know, we, we talk about what Milliken created with such revere and so much nostalgia, like it was this utopian creation and yet when you look at the elements, it was a monstrous, scary, kind of heinous development, but it created the town. And if we were here, if they had meetings like this back in 1880, there'd probably be massive opposition and Paklet wouldn't exist. You know, it's, I wish it was perfect, but it's never going to be perfect. But something has to be done and, you know, for 40 years now, the Mill's been gone. They abandoned the town, left the ruins. We need to decide what the next chapter is and that, that's going to require people. And I hope that we welcome these people and that we're neighborly and that we, we realize that the small town feel has nothing to do with buildings. Mark III cannot build an ugly enough house on a small enough lot or a big enough building to kill the small town feel. The only people that can do that is us and we are responsible. If that is waning or disappearing, I'm responsible, we're responsible in how we treat each other, especially online. We'll see that proven later tonight on Facebook. I'll get roasted, but that's, that's where the small town feel comes from, not from buildings, so.
You had something, Teresa?
Yes. I am, of course, the representative for District Three and I would just like to say that we see here tonight residents of Briarwood and their concern regarding the rezoning that would allow the development of 275 cookie cutter homes. And I've sourced several different websites and come to an average of there of about 1,000 homes in Paklet, in the Town of Paklet, give or take 20 within a 5.85 square miles. So you can roughly say a little bit over a quarter of those houses is how many houses is going to be packed in this small acreage. And that's a lot of houses. They're essentially sitting on top of each other with a driveway apart from the next one. This development would butt the property lines up too and including the backyards of those who live on Briarwood with only a 15-foot buffer. Am I correct? Only it was a 15-foot buffer? Okay. I attended the Planning Commission meeting Monday night that had a packed town hall with the majority of the residents of Briarwood and citizens of Paklet that opposed this rezoning. Paklet is a single-family dwelling residential town with neighborhoods. The citizens of Paklet choose to live here because of the slow-paced, small-town charm and the quietness of it all, the getting away from the noise pollution of the, of the city. If anyone who wants to live in those types of homes can go to Spartanburg or Greenville or Boiling Springs. I personally feel like there was a manipulation when it was implied and or suggested to the Planning Commission by Mr. Kay that this is what we need in order to acquire revenue to support or grow our town. Our future is not contingent on this one development. There are other means and ways to generate revenue to grow as a town. There are grants the town can apply for. Riverbend, the new rock quarry, is about to break ground in July. We will have revenue coming in from that facility and our town does have a healthy budget. Let's don't take the easy way out and get ourselves into something we wished we'd never had. Just because this is something good for the developers' market doesn't mean that it is good for Paklet. We were elected to represent and speak for our citizens and from what I hear loudly is that our citizens oppose this rezoning and this type of development. Have you all looked at the traffic on Facebook and read those comments? How about the town's website? When the town asked for, asked the citizens, tell us what your vision is for Paklet. What do you like about Paklet? What would you like to see in Paklet? No one suggested that we want big cookie cutter housing developments in our backyard or the potential of high crime rate or more drug activity or who knows what else. What our citizens did say was they liked our small-town charm, easy living, slow-paced, quiet living. We like that we are far out from the city, but close enough should we want to go and visit. And so does, the same sentiment goes for those who have moved here. I have some neighbors who moved here and been here over a year. They lived in Boiling Springs. Boiling Springs started out real small. They were way out in the country, but look at it now. They left there to come here. These were their same citizens. That's why people move to Paklet, because it's small town, to get away from all the noise, the traffic. Our Paklet motto says, "Close to everything, far from ordinary." If this is allowed to happen to plant slash cram 275 HOA cookie cutter homes into this small acreage, then we become just like every other city and town and no longer are far from ordinary, but become a cookie cutter town just like every other town. Also, who's to say that this would not spread through Paklet on other available acreage and or lots near you? Just because you live in Paklet and this is not in your backyard or next to you doesn't mean that it can't come to you or that it should not be a concern to you. A lot of the residents on Briarwood do not oppose growth as we have heard here tonight, not this, not just this type of growth, not this kind of development. As the plan is right now, there are 21 houses sitting right in their backyards. We do not need this kind of development in order to thrive and grow or move forward. Hey, how did any city or town thrive or grow before these cookie cutters came along? How did a town or city get, grow? How did they manage? They didn't depend on some kind of big, large development coming in and saying, oh, you know, that's our hero, that that's what we need to grow. They didn't do that. We know change is needed and wanted. We know growth is coming, but not like this. Let's instead reach out to developers with offers and incentives to remodel, renovate and beautify Paklet and let's have a growth that is good and healthy, manageable and substantial. I say Paklet should not follow in other towns or cities' footprints and make our own footprints. Let Paklet do Paklet and remain close to everything and far from ordinary.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments.
We'll have order.
So the, I agree with everything that's been said. Ms. Sexton, I appreciate that. The one thing that, you know, Millers was brought up earlier, Chantel brought up Millage and the, the first comment was immediately police department, going to have to grow. That's a concern to me because it seems like that's the biggest topic on, 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 on our mind, our administrator's mind, is the first thing he went to was police department, which tells me that it's probably going to be something that's a concern and a necessary growth. I don't think this... I don't think this level of progression is the direction this town needs to go in. And I think we should pull back a little bit and ask for a better plan and ask for, you know, maybe larger-sized lots. I mean, working with the developers is next akin from what our administrator is capable of doing. And I think he'll fully understand that we don't appreciate the small-sized lots and maybe go back to the table and the drawing board with Mark III and see if we can get more close to three-quarter acre lots or something larger than that. For now, I don't believe this is something we should approve. I agree with the planning commission, and we should uphold their ruling as well.
Anybody else? Okay. Over the past 20 years, you know, I've lived here all my life. Over the past 20 years, Paklet has been asking for housing. I mean, when Elaine was here, was asking for housing. We need housing. You know, I was on the school board. They were asking, we were asked to try to get one Spartanburg to help us get housing and things like this. And now, we have an opportunity to get housing and we're saying, "No. We don't want it." But, you know, how long will that last? If we say no to this one, will anybody else come in the next five years? We don't know. Mark III probably won't, but anyway, I don't know. I can't speak for them. Mr. Kay, some people in this room and in our town think you run the town, and that's somewhat true, but who do you answer to, Mr. Kay?
I answer to the mayor and council.
Yes, sir. And part of your job is to advise us on projects and ideas, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And when you advise us on projects, you get the pertinent information, including the cost to the town. So what the real question I want to know is, do you think there will be any extra expenses that we, as a town, might incur if this project moves forward and becomes fruition? Considering this is going to be a three-to-five-year build-out, we're talking a three-to-five-year build-out. We're not talking about these, you know, all these houses being built at one time. We're talking three-to-five years being built out. We're not going to have this influx in population in one month, two months, one year. It's probably going to be a year from now before they even start, if they start now. My question is, you know, is there any cost to the town? I mean, particularly, we talked about services like the police, Jason mentioned, sanitation, additional administration employees, like Ms. Quinn asked. If so, could, or do we have those, do you have those figures or not?
Well, I mean, there was a little bit of some concern that I was trying to understand because, you know, I do not comment on anything on Facebook. I do read everything that's out there. And I'm a bit confused because I want to ask this question. There seems to be the perception that the town of Paklet has its own water and sewer department. It does not. The town, the mill used to have it a long time ago, and I believe it sold it to Spartanburg Water. So there's no utilities that the town of Paklet has, except for, of course, sanitation pickup on there. But we have utilities, we have Lockhart Power and currently Union Gas, people that come here and pay those, and we accept those on behalf of. Union Gas, as of June 30th, we will no longer be a location for Union Gas payments, so there won't be an issue there. Lockhart Power will still collect there. This particular project will be entirely serviced by Duke Energy, so that won't be any type of increased service for the town. You know, there was a question about tax notices. The town of Paklet does not issue any tax notices, as far as I know. We send out business license information, but tax notice is done by the county. County collects all that. The county sends the check to the town of Paklet. I'm not aware of any bookkeeping additional on there in terms of management of an additional potential thousand. You know, we have the staffing to be able to cover what we currently do. A lot of times, people end up calling town hall. Sometimes, I would love for them to call their council members instead and then direct it back to me, but we can continue to be that sounding board and that collection on there. In terms of police, the town already needs to expand its police. The town's in a situation right now where you only have one officer per shift. If anything particular happens and someone's got to be arrested and taken to Spartanburg County, during that time, that round trip, booking into the jail, going through that entire process, which is not a short period of time, can take a long time. And all that time is, the town is without an officer. We do rely on Spartanburg County. They're short-staffed as well, so that's not always something that we can depend on. So having an additional officer and the increased tax base that would come from this particular project would help offset those additional costs. Regarding sanitation pickup, the town of Paklet currently does sanitation pickup Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Thursday and Friday is currently scheduled for limb pickup. In terms of expanding service to 276 homes, in theory, that would take less than one day. The town currently picks up approximately 1,100 carts in three days. So you can do the math on there. It's about 350, 375. So it ends up adding an additional day. Ideally, our trash crew would love to do five days a week. And what would end up happening is, we may end up having to bring on an additional, if we end up getting to five days of trash pickup, which this project wouldn't get us to that point. The only thing that you would lack is a little bit on limb pickup. And at some point down the road, I think it'd be worthwhile for the town to hire an additional, maybe part-time person during the summertime, to assist with some limb pickup. But beyond that, there's no need for an additional trash truck. The town bought one several years ago. There's a backup that we currently have. It was recently overhauled with a bunch of service. It's in with some service right now. So, yes, I'm trying to think of any reason for additional sanitation. There's no reason for additional sanitation employees. There's no reason for additional sanitation truck. I cannot figure out. All the building inspection would all be done by our third-party company, so the town just gets revenue from that. Zoning permits, that would be me. So it's just increased work for me to do. So I just get to hang out more with Paklet. I can't think of anything else that would cost the town additional funds that are out there. Down the road, and no pun intended, the town will have to eventually, maybe 20-years, 30-years down the road, have to repave these roads. Millen paved these roads. But being able to have a higher assessed value in the town of Paklet would enable the town to be able to issue bonds to cover the cost of that when that time comes. So, I mean, I see it as a win for the community. I see it as a, in terms of revenue-wise, in terms of financial basis to the town. This is a win. Now, one thing that was, I think was mentioned to me before, towns typically don't get a lot of revenue off of their residential properties because they're taxed at a 4% rate. And it's true. Although the town will end up getting, I believe, we're looking at the neighborhood of $260,000 in terms of tax revenue annually from this project. That doesn't include, it does not include what we'd end up getting from the building permits and the zoning fees that's out there. The thing that we have not considered on this project as well is a 12-acre development site for commercial. All of that commercial is taxed at a 6% rate, so the town ends up getting a much larger chunk of money. And with there are no residents in that location, there's no sanitation services on there. I talked to the developer to get an idea of what that cost would end up being, and we're looking at, I think it's the neighborhood of around $10 to $15 million. A conservative number of what it would be installed in there on that commercial property on 12 acres. I think it'd be much higher than that, but, you know, we'll look at about 10 to 15. That ends up being with our millage rate, roughly the neighborhood of around $50,000 to $75,000 of new revenue to the town and then assessed value.
That's on the commercial side?
Sir? That's on the commercial side, yes, sir. That also does not include the hospitality tax that the town would end up getting if it ended up having a restaurant out there or other types of services. It would pay the hospitality tax. So there's a slew of revenues that ends up coming to the town with this particular project.
Oh, 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 wait a minute. No, no. We'll have order here. Okay. I have another question. If any of these are needed, would you advise us to increase taxes or would you propose we take care of these? How would you propose us to take care of these monetarily?
So, the town of Paklet is currently at a 0.0842 millage rate. Council has made it very clear that they don't ever want to increase the millage rate or the franchise fee. And as long as you are increasing values within your community, annexing potential properties, doing developments like this, there should not be a reason to, there should be no reason to increase your millage rate. Increasing your millage rate only means that you've kind of hit a max in terms of how much you can get out of your potential residents, which, by the way, if you'll indulge me for The town of Paklet in terms of property tax revenue, and this is all property tax. This is home, this is commercial, this is personal property, all that kind of stuff that's out there. The town of Paklet currently brings in, and you can see it on our budget, is $600,000 of revenue to the town of Paklet. Our budget that you just passed for the police department is $735,000, meaning the property tax that is paid in this community is not enough to cover just the police department. So in terms of property tax revenue, you're getting short on that. And if you look at our revenue in terms of where money comes in, we've gotten really creative and tried to figure out different ways to bring in additional revenue. One of the things we worked on when I first got here was opening up the local government investment pool and getting additional interest to the town of Paklet. So before, I think you were getting around $2,500. I think you're looking at over $100,000 of interest revenue in. But trying to be creative in terms of how we squeeze as much blood out of the turnip as possible. So there are a lot of projects that need to be done. We've got a chipper truck that needs to be replaced. It's about $140,000 for the chipper truck in Chipper. That's approximately about a 20% increase in property tax. Waves need to be fixed throughout the town. I mean, you're looking at, I think we were looking at, at one point, that was close to about a 3,000% increase to be able to cover all those costs on there. I don't want to, I do not want to increase millage rate. I do not want to recommend that to you at all. I don't. And potential projects like this, help it so you don't ever have to have that conversation, at least for the next 10 years.
Another question that I got, too, is you conversed with Dr. Fowler, the superintendent of School District Three, about this project, and it being, like I said before, a three-to-five year build-out. What impact or strain would that be on the schools? And what was her reply?
We got letters from her for both the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, and they have plenty of capacity for this type of project. They want this type of, they want...
Oh, oh, oh.
I am saying directly from the School District of Three superintendent, who is saying that they have enough capacity, plenty of capacity, to take care of this particular project and others, and they want this project to move forward. They want to see something like this happen in the community, the tax revenue that ends up helping out the school, more dollars for the students to be able to provide more services.
Any other questions? Ready to vote?
Did you, and this is up to you. If you wanted to do, they have a presentation. It's up to you if you wanted to see that. And then they also made some additional changes to the development layout to try to accommodate the nearby neighbors. And this is Darren Webb and Madeline. Darren is with Mark III Properties and Madeline is with Bluewater.
We got to allow this? Presentation's done.
It's earlier.
Yes. Did y'all want it?
I don't think so.
You don't want it?
I'd like to see the updates.
Yes, please.
If you can just give us a...
Okay.
Yeah, the updates, just a brief.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Darren Webb with Mark III Properties. We are the developer for this subject property. Address is 170 Camelot Drive, Spartanburg, South Carolina, 29301. We just wanted to give you a brief update. I mean, you probably have seen Monday's planning commission presentation, but there's some updates there, and we'd like to give you some additional information that came out of that meeting that we've been able to process. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Moore, who's with Bluewater Engineering. She can give you kind of like a high-level view about the subdivision, and then I'll kind of piggyback off of that with some additional information that we've heard from not only the planning commission but the residents as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Maddie Moore. I'm with Bluewater Civil Design. Our address is 718 Lounche Road, Greenville, 29607. We did have a presentation that we presented to the planning commission on Monday night. We did hear a lot of concerns from the residents, specifically the ones that are but us on the northern property line. We've taken that into consideration, and we've sat down and had multiple discussions, and we feel that we can offer a planted landscape buffer along that property line. I've heard 15 feet. We are actually providing 25 feet from that property line. We are proposing that planted buffer would be approximately six foot tall, and then typically in these neighborhoods, we see 80% of the residents build a wooden privacy fence, so we feel that with the additional plantings and the fencing that would be built, we feel like this gives a sufficient buffer, since the plantings naturally weren't there. We just want to enhance that buffer along that property line.
Six feet does not.
So I'm just going to piggyback up a little bit off what Ms. Moore said. So, I mean, obviously, I've got your comprehensive plan here that talks a little bit about, you know, obviously, the town of Paklet. You know, on page 16, it says approximately 33% of the housing in the town of Paklet was built prior to 1950. That was 75 years ago. And 66% of the housing stock has been built between 1950 and 2009, which is 16 years ago. So it's been a while since, you know, some new homes have come into the community, and... So, a lot of the issues with older homes are that, you know, the housing stock, there's higher maintenance cost for residents to upkeep their homes. You know, older homes are more likely to pose health and safety issues due to less restricted building codes. And the elderly population, which is a majority of the community, has issues with that... And the elderly population, which is a majority of the community, has issues with that as well. In addition, that older homes don't have as efficient appliances, heating and cooling units. So, and many lack kitchen and plumbing facilities which detract from the home value. So, what we're trying to provide, and let me be clear, that Mark III is a land development company. We don't build homes.
Sorry. Hold it down. Please, we're going to have to ask you to remove, to remove you off the place here because we, we haven't too many interruptions. If you can't be civil, we'll move you out. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, we are a land development company. We do what our, we hitch our wagons to national, regional home builders who want to build homes and nice homes in communities like Packlet. So, we put in the infrastructure. We pad lots out, we grade it, we put in storm drain utilities, water, sewer, storm, and then pad everything out and sell it to them. And they dictate what that market is, what size lot they need, what size home, what size price. So, they have a market research division that analyzes everything and dictates what the price point needs to be. So, that's where we landed on this development here and what can be sold in this market. Transparently, if it said two-acre lots, eight-hundred thousand to a million dollars, we'd be happy to develop that for them, but that's not what the market's striving right now. The upstate of South Carolina, there's a very small niche for that kind of high-end product, but a majority of it is where we're landing now in this three-hundred, you know, to four-hundred-thousand-dollar product. So, I know we have a big target on our back with the residents that we're the bad guys, but we're just doing what our clients want us to do. And we're here to speak on their behalf. You know, there's a couple of concerns that came out of, you know, Monday's Planning Commission meeting. I think, you know, some came from Ms. Quinn, and she was concerned about having a development in her backyard.
Dee Dee, please be respectful, okay? Just be respectful. No, just be, no, be respectful or no.
Maybe we can allow some time after, after the presentation.
No, go ahead.
So, the site, I think, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. I've kind of got your, you know, obviously your, your comprehensive plan. It was zoned like neighborhood fringe originally and then it was rezoned to industrial, which was a little bit confusing to me. And again, I'm not questioning the people who rezoned it to light industrial because it's kind of wedged in between two commercial pieces. And you've got all this industrial up here, which kind of makes sense to me. I don't know why this was singled out as industrial. Maybe it was just access to 176 or whatever it may be. But my question is, and to Ms. Quinn, you know, we're happy, like Ms. Moore said... Can we not name names? I think, I think that's instigating. Yeah, okay. Then the adjacent property owner has concerns about backing up to a residential neighborhood, but it's zoned industrial. So, the alternative would be if Amazon wanted to come in and build an eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot distribution center that runs three shifts twenty-four-seven with trucks and, and noise and light, you know, going all that time. You can have that in your backyard or you can have a quite, a quiet neighborhood. And we have been willing to, like Ms. Moore said, not only have that twenty-five-foot buffer, but do a planted buffer with tree, with canopy trees every fifty feet and then a, and then a evergreen buffer tree, you know, every like thirty feet. And typically in neighborhoods like this, everybody puts privacy fences up. So, that's another thing that everybody's going to do. So, we're willing to give that up. I mean, obviously.
And just one question. You mentioned Amazon, but would that not be considered heavy manufacturing instead of light industrial?
That would not be considered heavy.
Why not?
I mean, that's actually a warehouse. Warehouse would actually be even less than what would be currently for a manufacturing, building of products and that sort of thing. Manufacturing would be, would be considered a higher level than just a warehouse.
I would think that would be considered more than light industrial. Well, I know we had this discussion last month.
No, it's not though.
That manufacturing, because we were pressed to vote to add that in to the industrial or what would be considered industrial.
It'd be considered light industrial.
It's just distribution. They're not manufacturing anything.
It's not a manufacturing or anything.
But it's still like a production line?
No, no, I mean, it's a...
I think, I think Amazon in Spartanburg's never going to move to Packlet.
Oh, no, they're not, yeah. That's...
But anyways, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
So, anyways, it's just having, whether a quiet neighborhood behind you or having light industrial behind you. It's, you can pick your poison. And again, Mr. K has been kind enough to come to our office, meet with us. We've been to his office, met with him because he's given us this PowerPoint presentation about the vision of Packlet. And I got to tell you, it's, it's pretty nice if it can come to fruition. I mean, I'm seeing like improved canoe kayak access, established retail, retail and restaurants on the riverfront, you know, green space. We have an amphitheater, outdoor stage, children's play area, you know, a boardwalk, food truck Fridays. This sounds so incredible for Packlet and granted, I'm not local here. I'm from York County and I live in the Lake Wile area. And I wish Lake Wile had had that vision twenty years ago to do that because I think this is something special. But in order to bring that, I think, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a professional on that side, but like you need residents and you want community. And this is what we are hoping to build as a footstep to Packlet and bringing residents here and families here and garnering a community involvement to this revitalization to the Packlet River and what Mr. K and you guys have envisioned, which I think is fabulous. Because, I mean, the Packlet River is great. You know, you, you know, you improve the launches and you have the boardwalk and, you know, have coffee shops down there and fun things on the weekends for kids. But I think the residents need to be here to do it and we're here to support it. I mean, again, we're making some concessions. I understand the density. Again, if, if I could build two-acre lot, if I could find a builder who said Packlet needs eight-hundred-thousand-dollar homes on two-acre lots, we would build it for them. But they dictate what they see based on their analytics and, and their demographics. So, you don't, you don't have the flexibility technically. So, once, once your, once your development begins, you're dictated on, on the lot size and the type of home and structure. There's no flexibility there, correct? A hundred percent because it's driven by the builder. That's right. They say, yes. Driven by analytics that dictate this is what's going to sell the most, the most profitability and HOA, whether it dissolves in five or ten years, this is what we're going to sell them at for the time being, correct? That's correct, yes.
Anything else?
I'm going to ask Mr. K a question.
Hang on a minute. Let's see if she got anything else.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, don't. I think I'm good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
When we were doing our master plan, the comprehensive plan, which we have been doing for quite some time, this was not even in the making. We didn't know anything about this development, but yet we knew we were going to make it. We were going to, we were going to get our revenue from where. At the time, it was Riverbend. Riverbend was going to bring in this revenue in order for us to help us do this. Now, all of a sudden, Riverbend's not going to be able to help us do this. We need these people. We need this development.
Riverbend hadn't been, Riverbend hadn't taken out, he wasn't taking it out of revenue. It's coming in.
Well, it is, but he said the other night that the question was asked, even with the revenue that was coming in from Riverbend, would we not be able to sustain and be able to do what we wanted to do on our master plan? He was like, no, that money's going somewhere else. But, but now all of a sudden, what Riverbend was going to help us with, they're not now, but now they can. So, there's a lot of flip-flopping, you know, and whatever's good today.
Let, let, let me explain that one to you. The, the money that was coming in from Riverbend, the potential two-hundred thousand dollars was to, was to fund the projects, not the town. It was just fund the projects to do the riverwalk, to do, because the master plan puts, at the end of, you create a master plan, you create, you know, millions of dollars worth of projects. But then you got to be able to fund them.
But still, we were using that money where now you say that we, we won't have that.
Well, you, you have that. You have the two, you have potentially two-hundred thousand, whatever the, the potential property tax revenue on there. The, this ends up being able to fund the day-to-day operations of the town. The two-hundred thousand dollars ends up being able to fund infrastructure projects. The Towne Packlet's currently putting in about a hundred thousand dollars to do a stormwater master plan of the entire town. The project on Cameron Street alone is four-hundred thousand dollars. There's a lot of projects...
That's already going to do. I just don't see how we were just able to function up until now.
Excuse me?
Really? How did we function up until now? Really?
How did you function up until now?
How did this town function up until now? Now, all of a sudden, we got to have this to be able to function.
That's rhetorical.
Point blank.
Do you want me to answer that one?
It doesn't require an answer, no.
Okay, I mean, I could, but I do have another question, and this was something that I was trying to figure out because it was like the dense home on this particular project was going to be so much, so bad. And so, I looked at it and I was looking at the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance, because it was requested, one of the persons mentioned a R-20, R-20 lots. That's what we'd like to see on the property is R-20 lots, which is a twenty-thousand-square-foot lot. If you look at the rear yard setback for R-20 under our ordinance, it's thirty feet, thirty feet from the back of someone's house to the end of the property line is for R-20. What they're proposing is thirty-five feet.
So...
So, they're proposing some more, they're proposing more setback than what you would get if you had R-20.
I think, I think we've had enough discussion on the topic and I'm not willing to entertain any more arguments from citizens or administrators.
I'll determine that though. I'm running the...
Let's vote.
You're correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You don't want any more, you don't want any more?
Excuse me?
You don't want any more discussion?
Well, I just don't want any more arguments.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're back and forth at this point.
Yeah, good, okay.
Can I, can I say one more thing or...
Sure, one more thing.
Yeah, and I failed to mention about the commercial property in the front that's designated. If y'all see that kind of...
Great.
Blank space there. I mean, I know that like drugs, I know that drugstores and banks have kind of like left town and we'd like to bring them back and coffee shops and so forth.
Please, please, keep it to yourselves, the guys.
It would be nice if it was...
Hey!
Okay, Dan, I'm right beside it.
All right, Heath, you need to be quiet or get out.
And the last thing is, is I haven't personally had interaction with the seller, Mr. Wilson, and obviously he unexpectedly passed within the past like thirty days. And he wanted to sell this very fast to us so he could either pay like medical bills with his health issues or give it to his heirs. So, not to tug at the heartstrings, but we would like to honor him and kind of like close this. So...
Be quiet?
To give it to his heirs, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you guys for your time.
No more arguments? And everybody heard everything you need to hear?
No.
No, 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 this is us. This is, this is a council meeting. It's not, it's not y'all, we all had your point, the three minutes beforehand, you had it back on Monday. So, we, this, no, 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 Heath, no, 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 no.
This is a town, this is a town.
Out. Go ahead and get out.
You can leave?
Yes, please.
This is the biggest thing there is. The town has...
Go on out, go on out, go on out, go on out. We don't want to hear it.
They had twenty minutes. We only had eight between two lines.
Hey, go.
That's enough.
Go.
Get it.
All right. Okay, y'all heard it. Any more? All right, we call the vote. All in favor of approving it. All in favor of approving it. Three. All in, all opposed.
Thank you.
And how about Rick, you...
I abstained my vote.
He abstains. Any, you have a reason to abstain him?
I do. I have heard for the last twenty years that we need to grow, we need to grow, we need to grow. I have heard from citizens that they are against this. I've heard from citizens that they are for it. And right now, I am split in the middle. It's not a development that I would buy in. It's not a development that I'd want to live next to. But I'm not going to vote to reject it and I'm not going to vote for it at this time.
If you abstain, that means you're for it.
I'll stand.
Just to clarify.
Okay. All right. That's the, that's three in favor.
Based on the ordinance of the town, that ends up being a four-two vote in favor of the project under first reading. The town still has a second reading coming up.
That's right.
June twenty-sixth.
That's right. Okay. All right. Go ahead. Any comments?
Four, two opposed.
Do you have any comments?
Let me know if this is not appropriate. I had a resident, she's not in my district. I'm glad that I'm approachable for people and she's been reaching out to me with some concerns and I just wanted to go on record to have some clarity for her as far as animal control. Who, Spartanburg County doesn't handle our animal control complaints. How does Packlet do that, Patrick?
I'd much rather have the chief here to kind of talk about what they do and don't do, but we do not have the ability to have any type of animal control within our town. We, we don't have a, a dog catcher as people would normally have.
After Kay, over, yeah, against me. You don't care about my property. I'm a town resident.
Please, please.
I'm not a town resident. Take it. I'm taking it outside. For sale.
Sorry. Okay. You had some question, you had that question. Patrick, you have an answer for that?
One more time if you can ask that question. The, the animal control, so the Towne Packlet currently does not have any animal control officers and they don't have any way to pick up any animals. The only thing the town has the ability to do is to issue citations to a particular property owner to, or work with the property owner to address the concerns that are out there. If it's the property that I think you're talking about... If it's the property that I think you're talking about, Clark Taylor, who works for CCNI, is aware of this and it's on his list to take care of and addressed as soon as he can. But, you know, we've got a big backlog of stuff, but I can move that to the top of the list and make sure it gets taken care of immediately.
Thank you, I appreciate that. One more thing. Also, on our town website, if I'm not mistaken, constituents can go on there regarding codes, right?
Yes, if you've been hearing any complaints about code issues, it's still set up so that they can go online and they can go online and they can post their concern on there. They can have a picture of that and the email will go to both myself, the town clerk, and it goes to the code enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a roll call on that last vote?
Roll call?
Yeah.
Why not?
Each council member with the vote that they... Just wanna make sure. Teresa asked me, she wasn't sure how it really ended.
Three, four, two, against, and one, abstain.
Do you need a roll call? Do you?
That's what I asked for.
Okay. Go ahead, it doesn't matter.
So, councilperson Palmer Green, were you in favor of that last vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams, were you in favor of that vote?
Yes.
Mayor Ned Camby, were you in favor of that vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sexton, were you in favor of that vote?
No.
Councilmember Brackens, were you in favor, against, or abstaining from that vote?
Abstain from voting.
Mr. Wright, were you in favor or against that vote?
Against.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do you have anything?
I have two comments. First, I just wanna issue a warning to Mark III. We hired a private building inspection company for this very time. This is not gonna be like Boiling Springs, it's not gonna be like the county. They are very thorough, they are very strict. You may wanna pass that along to your builders. The standards that the county tolerates will not be tolerated by CCNI and that's why we hired them. That's not meant to be a threat or anything, that's just, that's why we do have done this. Did you have comments to that?
No, we can converge afterwards.
Yeah, we'll pass that point.
You can talk to afterwards, after the meeting.
Additionally, additionally, the Plan Commission has another vote on this where they are gonna check on whether you guys did what you said you'd do. So, I really encourage you to put a little extra effort into that buffer because they will be revisiting it and I'm sure you will. I just wanna voice that. And then the second thing, I just wanted to mention, this is not a District IV specific update, but there's a citizen in town who's been, who's taken it on himself to begin rebuilding an area of town that's a historic site. It's known by the locals as God's Little Acre. His name is Jamie Cooper. He's put an amazing amount of backbreaking work into that. He was caught today and someone snitched on him over there working, rebuilding stone walls. We need more of that and just wanna recognize that person. That's all I have.
When you mean snitched, is he in trouble? Is there a issue?
No, he told him about it.
Not yet, not yet, depends.
Okay, Rick, you have anything?
Only thing I got is I wanna thank the citizens that's reached out to me and voiced their opinions. It's a decision that I don't take lightly on this residential versus commercial. I was sitting here about eight weeks ago and I heard a lot of complaints about light industrial, that a lot of people didn't want businesses in their backyards. They didn't want the noise, they didn't want the pollution. And now, some of those same people don't want neighbors. So, it makes it really hard for me to make a decision. It's like I stated a while ago, it's not a residence or area that I would probably purchase in, but we do need to grow. So, I'm between a rock and a hard place and I got a lot to think about between now and the next reading.
I just wanna add to that. At that time, though, they didn't know anything about the development.
At that time, you was the one that was complaining the most about warehouses.
I didn't complain about it. I didn't say I didn't. I said, no, I did not, go back.
I didn't say anything.
I did not say I put forward it. I said, it's light industrial, I didn't want the manufacturing part of it.
Okay.
I didn't say I didn't want it, didn't want the manufacturing part that they wanted.
That's okay, we'll talk about that later.
No, I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Rick. You have anything?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, I'd like to thank all the committees and all the work that we've seen here tonight with the budget and we hope that we can go forward with this and make a positive instead of a negative. And that's all I have. End of motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Don't move.